We're glad to have all of you with us. We have a master of ceremonies that is going to take charge of this meeting until we come to the point where we're going to do the signing of the sister city. Ellison, when I said, "Where are you?"
I'm here.
I am so grateful that you came here to see us. You treated us so well when we were in China. We enjoyed our time and we learned a lot and we developed a great relationship with you. With that, we're going to follow our schedule pretty close. So I'm going to introduce to you Dr. Hodges. He's superintendent of the schools and he is our economic development president. Dr. Hodges, go ahead.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to welcome everyone to this historic meeting. At this time, I think it would be appropriate for introductions. And so I will turn this back to Ellison for introductions.
So I guess go to the next one, right? 五万八，好的。
非常，非常高兴。
作为天宁区下面的一个区。好的，好。Mr. Xu is the director of the Tianying Economic Development Zone, which is a sort of like economic development park within Tianying District, which is directly responsible to the Jiangsu Provincial Government. And also it has a population about... 人口大概多少？
一个五万八。
五万八，okay. About fifty-eight thousand population within this economic zone. So it's not too big, but, you know, by American states, it's okay, right? It's okay size. So his main responsibility in the job is to promote Tianying Economic Development Zone as a desirable business and investment location in front of investors or business people from China and around the world. So he's very glad to be here and be with everyone here. In Chinese old saying, there's a, you know, we say, you know, once is strange, twice is friends. So Mayor Wang is very happy to be here with Mayor Urban and a few other people, everyone here. As a visit back to make the friendship one step further. About three years ago, Mayor Wang met with Condesphere delegation led by Mayor Urban. The two parties get together, get along easily and had a great time together, developed relationships since then. This is really a historical moment for Tianying City as well. For this relationship, for this friendship, Tianying delegation consisting of total of nine members made this trip to Condesphere, which is a very beautiful city. So he'd like to further develop a relationship and also like to take the opportunity to introduce Tianying District a little bit to everyone. Tianying is located in this Changjiang, the Yangtze Delta region in China, which is near Shanghai, Jiangsu and Zhejiang province. One of the most economically dynamic and powerful regions in China. The city has over twenty-five hundred years' history. The city has a geographic area about... 六十八万，okay. Sixty... A... Six hundred eighty thousand square meters, square kilometers. So it's a decent-sized city in China. And also has a local residents about over half million people. So our main industry is the service industry and the manufacturing industry. Not like many other cities in China, you know, which heavily rely on the manufacturing sectors. Tianying has a more percentage, larger percentage of the industry in the service area. Right now, we have over seventy percent of the industry's service-oriented business. Tianying is still working hard to make progress toward this so-called modernization, you know, target, the business goal, which is a common goal for all the cities, all the provinces in China, they have, you know, the five-year business plan, they want to get there. So the city is working very hard towards that goal. We sincerely wish our friends from Condesphere will have the opportunity to come back to visit us again and make this friendship just grow stronger and stronger going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So I guess the next one would be John, right, Mr. Baker?
Well, I can...
I can, Ellison, it's our folks.
Okay, okay.
If you have other delegation you'd like to introduce, we can go from there.
我讲一下，我讲一下。The Chinese thinking is very fast. So this is Mr. Xu, he's the director of the Tianying Commerce Department. His main job responsibility is to help the local business and also help the foreign business make sure they are successful in Tianying. And also he's in charge of this external, you know, international affairs communication side as well. So that's Mr. Xu. So this is Mr.葛卫龙，he's the chairman of the...
黑牡丹。
黑牡丹，呃，group。
Black Poly.
Black Poly，uh，group in China, which is a highly successful public company in China.
What kind of company, Ellison?
呃，这个公司具体做什么业务的？
做纺织服装。
牛仔。
Textile, textile and the jean, you know, the jean, all the jean materials, right? Okay, okay. So his company specializes in the jean textile, you know.
Okay, blue jeans.
The blue jeans, right. So the annual production is amazing number, I forgot, it's a lot of zeros there. I apologize for that. But the estimate is about maybe one, every one jean out of ten are made by his company. The material, his company supplies for, you know, one out of ten jeans in the world.
You tell him, we want him to open a branch here.
好的，我们会以后慢慢的商。
Okay. We like this idea, we will talk about this further. Thank you very much. Mr.吕泽伟，he's the president of the常州，天，天浩，天浩New Materials Company。呃，假如我没有记错的话，也是一家上市公司。
对，对，上市公司。
Another public company in China, extremely, extremely successful business in China.
What do they do, Ellison?
啊，你们贵公司做什么样的一个产品啊？
呃，主要是高分子材料。
高分子。
主要高分子，橡胶塑料这种。
橡胶塑料，okay. So the company specializes in the...
不是，不是皮革。
Polymer, right? Polymer, polymer compound products. Is that, okay, yeah.
新材料系。
New materials, basically it's a chemical materials, you know, like the nano technology, right? The nano technology?
Yes.
You know, the polymer, those, you know, advanced materials, which has, you know, great features and maybe, you know, anti-corrosion, anti-heating, you know.
We can use them here too.
Okay，我们康维市需要，需要你的产品。
都欢迎来到康维市。
对，对，Indiana，对。
那其中的这个风力叶片，
叶片。
因为的材料，就我们就生产。
哦，对。On the way from Chicago to Condesphere, Mr. Liu saw lots of wind power facilities in Indiana. And his company manufactures that certain, you know, chemical components which are used for this wind turbine manufacturing. So that's just one example of his product application there.
Thank you.
谢谢。
这个是我们政府办公的主任，张宏斌先生。
It's Mr. Zhang Hongbin, he's the director of the Tianying District Government Office in Tianying.
公司我们是从常州出来的。
生产，呃，对。
生产都在常州，哦，okay。啊， This gentleman is the chairman of Hongxing Mei Kai Long Group in China, which, to my understanding, is a historical, historically speaking, it's the largest, one of the largest retailers for the furniture products in China. It has hundreds of outlets around the country, like, almost like Walmart here. You know, you see Walmart everywhere, but in China, you can see, you know, his company everywhere around the country. But these days, the company looks like they are focusing more on the sort of real estate development side in addition to the furniture wholesale retail business. So he's the president of the company. The company is not traded in the stock exchange yet, but they are working on that, it's gonna come soon.
He could develop a wholesale place here in Condesville.
Okay. Condesville needs a lot of furniture, right? 第一个要来美国，还没有定，哦。So the company has a very concrete plan to do business in the United States. There's no question about it, there's no debate. And then, the things under debate, one of them is the location, which city should they go? So... 好，欢迎你到康维市来。Thank you.
这刚才还有我们两位工作人员，一个陆先生，一个先生。
Okay, so Mr. Zhang is the main interpreter, right? And Mr. Liu is one of the staff person coming with the delegation. So that's, that's all we have for Tianying. Now it's your turn, right?
Thank you, thank you. We have people from a number of different groups and boards today, and I will introduce them separately. First, from the Economic Development Group, we have Kathy Wenning. Kathy, would please stand.
I just want to welcome everyone and thank you so much for making a stop here in Condesville.
Ellison, she works with our electric company called Duke Energy and she represents them and takes care of each, each area as her type of person, kind of a public relations person. If we need some electric for a big plant, we go to her.
Right.
That's what she does if you tell her delegation.
Next, we have Randy White. Randy is the CEO of our hospital here in town and I think some of you will get an opportunity to talk with him in more detail later today.
Okay, what's the name of the hospital?
Fair...
Fair，Fair，Fair。
Regional Health.
Fair Regional Health, okay。
Ellison, they can't buy our hospital, but we would love to have some good Chinese doctors.
Okay，
You'll tell them.
Yeah, this is interesting. Mayor Wang was telling me, as a part of the sort of a business plan for Tianying, they are talking about, in the future, hopefully near future, they can do some exchange program with the American hospitals and the healthcare providers to share some expertise and learn from each other. They would welcome your hospital to, if you had a visit back to Tianying and see what they have and see if there might, there might be some healthcare, you know, service, business opportunities for your hospital as well.
Please relate to them that even though we are a standalone hospital, a smaller American hospital, we are in the top ninth percentile in quality scores, patient satisfaction scores, we do an excellent job. And as we will see later, we are a very high-tech corporation, so I look forward to that. And also the vast majority of our doctors are from IU Bloomington, Indiana University, which is a top medical school.
So top nine out of what, out of Indiana or nationwide? Wow, okay, that's very impressive. Thank you.
One of my responsibilities this morning is to keep us on time. So my apologies, they all have speeches of about twenty minutes to share. We're going to ask them to hold those and I'll introduce them and then we'll try to move along quick.
Okay, so you're gonna introduce each of them?
Yes. We have, we have the chairman of our county commissioners with us this morning, someone that you may know, Barton Barker, Barton, if you'd stand please. The president of our county council, Shirley Wise. We also have Mark Nobby, who's a county commissioner, excuse me, county councilman, I apologize. Also county councilman Dale Strong.
Dale Strong先生啊，也是我们那个县里边的议员之一。
On behalf of Fayette County, I'd like to welcome all of our friends from China today. So I'm very glad to see you all.
Another county councilman, Mike Winter. On behalf of, to echo Dale's sentiments, Councilor Dale Strong's sentiments, and welcome you to Condesville and hope that you enjoy your stay here. Thank you. A member of our board of work, someone that you might recognize, is Ronnie Coldiron. Thanks for coming, we really appreciate the relationship that we built, the trip that you hosted to us when we were in China was wonderful. We've shared it with a lot of people. And thank you for coming back today, pleased to meet you both. Another member of our board of works is Mike Bishop.
Good morning and welcome, we hope you enjoy your visit here today, thank you for coming.
And we also have Jane Oakley, who's a member of the board of works.
Welcome, and we look forward to strengthening the relationship between the two cities in the United States.
Before I introduce city council, there's another familiar face too in the back row, there's David Joe.
Be nice.
Yeah, we remember the time when you drank and had a...
Ellison, would that be called Bai Joe?
Yeah.
A little Bai Joe.
Bai Joe，Bai Joe，就是白酒，然后他的名字又叫Joe，就是白酒。That's right.
Our city attorney is John Baker.
Hello, welcome to our city and our county and I hope we have a long relationship.
Sitting next to John is a city council member, Fran Chammel. City next to John is a city council member Fran Schommel.
Morning everybody and welcome to Connersville, we have lots of water and anything you make in Tianjin, you can make in Connersville.
We'll go all the way down to the end and I'll introduce city councilwoman Nancy Stevens.
I want to welcome you all to Connersville, welcome you back over and over again, in fact, I hope you come and stay, and we're gonna feed you in just a little bit.
Next Nancy is Debbie Montgomery.
Welcome to Connersville, I hope you all enjoy your visit, and I hope it's not the last time you come to see us.
Next is Gabe Nobby, that name may sound familiar, I introduced his dad just a little while ago, he's part of our county councilman.
Okay, that's right, yeah.
Welcome to Connersville, we appreciate you taking time to visit our lovely city, thank you.
Next I'd like to introduce Julie Grieson.
Hi, welcome, we're glad to have you here today and hope you come back many times.
And my challenge was to get the meeting to the mayor at eleven thirty. And so at this time I'd introduce our mayor Leonard Urban.
I'm glad you're here today, Mayor. God bless you.
上帝保佑
It was so good to us when we were in China, held a great big dinner for us, exchanged gifts, and we just had a wonderful time, even if Joe be drank Baiju. Pass those out to, just these to each one of the Chinese people. You got one, right?
You're not
现在签
They had one copy already, which has been produced, so just sign on that copy.
Okay. Okay, I'm not sure what in there has, but
签好的协议章
交换一下
Okay
那么我们是大局长，我是副局长 你给他介绍一下
好的
Okay, okay. One of our purposes today to get together was to sign our sister city agreement. In order to do that, we have to do it in an open council, meaning my council has to vote to accept it. The Chinese delegation has already voted to do that, we've been waiting for that for two years, and that has come about, you explain. With that, I'm going to call the meeting of the city council, the city of Connersville to order. The city council will come to order. We will stand and recite the pledge allegiance we
就我们要，呃
For us.
For you guys, right, okay，他们要站起来，我们不用站，我们不用，啊，因为他们这边有个程序，就是说要要宣誓，是吧，对祖国要忠诚，然后再能够做一个表决
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ellison, it is our custom in our city to have an invocation, and we'll ask Ronnie to come to the podium at this point, and we'll have a short invocation.
Okay
You explain today what we're doing.
That's right. Father, we're grateful today for your grace, we're grateful for your mercy, we thank you for our city. Thank you for the knowledge, Lord, and especially the wisdom that you've given us, strengthened us with. We thank you for our friends today from China. We appreciate them and the relationships that we have built in the past, and we just ask that your grace be upon the relationships that we build in the future. Ask Lord for strength, ask for help as we go forth, Lord, in these consultations and friendships that we make with your blessing and your grace, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
You want to explain to them The city council then will consider the agreement between the Tianjin District, Changzhou City, Tianjin Province, of the People's Republic of China and Connersville City in Indiana, of the United States, to establish friendly cities relationship. And I'm, you have got a copy before you, each one of you, and I will ask Mr. Fran Schommel, a longtime member of our council, who will read that agreement, Fran?
Thank you, Your Honor. Agreement between Tianjin District of Changzhou City, Jingzhou Province of the People's Republic of China and Connersville City of Indiana, of the United States of America, on the establishment of friendly cities relationship. Tianjin District of Changzhou City, Jingzhou Province of the People's Republic of China and Connersville City of Indiana, of the United States of America in accordance with the principles on the establishment of diplomatic relations between the People's Republic of China and the United States of America for the purpose of promoting mutual understanding and consolidating friendly cooperation between the two cities and through friendly consultations have reached an agreement on the establishment of friendly cities relationship. The two cities agree to make concerted efforts on the basis of equal partnership and mutual benefits to promote friendly people-to-people contacts as well as economic and trade cooperation and actively conducting exchange and cooperation in the areas of science, technology, culture, sport, health, education and human resources and so forth. This agreement is produced in duplicate, in Chinese and English, both being equally authentic. It shall come into force from the signing date. This agreement will be valid for five years. Upon expiration, it may remain in force unless either city terminates it. Representative Tianjin District of Changzhou City, Jingzhou Province, the People's Republic of China. Representative, Connersville City, Indiana, the United States of America.
City council, you have heard the reading of the agreement, what would be your pleasure at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the agreement as presented.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a quorum present, and we are preparing. Is there anybody have any question about this agreement? Any questions at all? Is there anybody of our friends might have any question about this agreement?
啊，so this is a very important to Tianjin district, so the entire city there, you know, from top to bottom, everyone has studied into very details about this agreement, and it's a very standard agreement by the way, has been signed by, I would say, hundreds, you know, of the cities in the United States in relationship to their sister city relationship with the Chinese cities, sister cities there. So they're very familiar with the term, they have no questions. Actually, the deputy mayor was sort of direct coworker, you know, mayor of the Tianjin has already signed this agreement, they have produced this very highly decorated, you know, the package for this ceremony, so one signature is already there from the mayor, so if there's no other questions, maybe, you know, Mayor Urban, if you're
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll vote on this in just a minute.
We'll vote on it, that's right, okay
Has everybody been able to read the agreement, okay, all right. With no further ado, I'll take a motion. We have a motion on the floor, I was getting stuff done, okay. We have a motion on the floor to accept this agreement, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Councilman Schommel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
All four of the council people being present, and it being a quorum, have voted yes. I therefore declare that this agreement shall be signed, and it has passed this city council officially this morning at about eleven forty-two AM. I thank you so much. Do you want to get me a pen? Have passed the agreement, so I'll ask him to come down by me right here. We're gonna use a special pen here so I can give a pen to him and he can give a pen to me, she's all good now. We're gonna use a special pen, so that we can keep the pen that we signed with. Oh, I need two. You being our guest, Mayor, I'll let you sign first, I'll let you sign first, oh, he's already signed, okay.
He already signed.
Okay, I guess I just need one. Right here, Ellison, or up to the side?
Yeah, that's the
Underneath to the side? Okay.
Very good. Okay, so Mayor, you keep one copy and Tianjin will keep one copy.
I'll give you the pen I signed with. Thank you. We'll take our places here. When we were in China, we tried to develop this sister relationship. You have to ask for the relationship, and they didn't ask to be considered, and they have to vote on it, just like we have, and did it today. This will mean a lot to us in the future to keep this relationship going back and forth even as these government officials or business people come and go, they know where Connersville is. In this city, we have millions of gallons of water, we have an aquifer that runs right alongside our city, fresh water. We won second in the United States in quality of water, two years in a row. We are also an EB5 county, which means that a person from China could come here and develop a company, invest at least five hundred thousand dollars and become a citizen of both China and the United States. It's called dual citizenship under the EB5 rules, this county is qualified to do that. Our city in our county is rich in land, where you could have horses, or you could have home in the country with land around it. Rich with fishing and hunting and recreation. Dr. Howser, are we talking about the bicentennial here or up there?
Well, looking at the time, we were going to do that here, but we're about out of time. There was also on our agenda, on our agenda was the gift exchange at this point in time, if you wanted to do that.
I want to tell them a couple more things about our community fight, fight. I want to tell them a couple more things about our community fight spirit. We are an industrial city, made lots of automobiles here over the last hundred years, lots of different kinds of parts for automobiles.
So it has a nickname called Little Detroit, right, at one point, yeah.啊，康威市这边呢就是说这个汽车零配件生产这个产业还是比较发达的，在过去一百年里边做了相当生产了相当大的这个大量的这个汽车的零配件啊，康威市呢也在呃有在美国有这个这个大家通俗的这个小名叫小底特律，有这个小底特律之称，对。
We also, while we were in China, realized that Chinese people don't have nursing homes. We have four large nursing homes here. I've taken Ellison to visit them, along with our healthcare system through our hospital. You'll see our hospital this afternoon, and one of our manufacturing companies that extrudes aluminum, a really nice operation. Our city is going to be two hundred years old. We're gonna start celebrating on the twenty-eighth of June. I understand your city's twenty-five hundred years old. We're a little bit younger. We have our gift is to deal with our centennial, so I'd like to present them at that time if it's okay with you.
好好好好。打开看一下，给大家看一下。
They're gonna show everyone the gift from Tianjin as well to the city of Connersville.
这是一个代表常州代表天津的，
So this is a.
有长的一个画卷。
是诗字的，是吧？
对，非常长，非常长的一个，像是一个。
It's a made of silk. It's a painting about the historical part of Changzhou and the Tianjin area. So you can see, you know, very historical culture, traditional Chinese culture in the, in the southern, mid-southern part of China.
We will, we will be proud to display that here at our sitting hall.
If you can walk through each picture, you get a very, you will get a very good idea about, you know, Tianjin's history, culture, everything.
You will have to read it to me, Ellison.
Uh, that's right. Actually, they have Chinese there. They have English there. They have English and Chinese, so every people can read it.
Thank you. We are, we are hardly grateful.
非常感谢，非常感谢。
近了一大步，对。After signing this sister city relationship agreement, we made a huge step forward.
That's right. Absolutely. We have a little token of our appreciation for you coming today. I got everybody? Okay. What we're going to do real quick, because October wants to be, we're already ten minutes behind, right? You want to get a picture? As he makes the music, let's go over north to the center, Mayor. Come on over here. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
谢谢，非常谢谢。
These, this gift and this agreement will be put on display at our city hall. We're going to adjourn our meeting here now and move to the Miller Building in the park for lunch. You explain what we're doing. Our business being completed today, if there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion on the floor and a second to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say hi. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned, and we will reconvene at the Miller Building for lunch.